All notices have been posted. There is a call in present. Commissioner Arnold, Commissioner Dominique, Commissioner Wilson, myself, and Commissioner Thornton by video. And at this time, I'd ask everybody if they would to silence their phones and you have pagers or radios just to turn them down. And this time, I will ask Commissioner Dominique to leave us some prayer and pledge allegiance to the United States and take some class.
Our heavenly Father, we thank you very much for this beautiful day that you provided us today, Lord. It's so nice to be able to enjoy some good weather for a change. But also, Lord, I ask that you would be with us throughout this evening as we conduct the business of E S D, that you would be with those that have lost their homes and their belongings in the past to the different fire dangers and different events that have happened, Lord, that you'd be with them, lead them, guide them. Lord, you'd be with all of our first responders, that you'd strengthen them, bring these, Lord. Praise the things your sons stand. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor, religion, faith. I pledge allegiance to the United States of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Item three is recognition of guests and special presentations. I don't think we have any guests tonight. Okay. All right. We'll move on to item four, public comment. Have you anybody signed up for public comment?
We do not.
Okay, good. We'll move right on to item five then. This will be our consent agenda. Discuss, consider, and take any necessary action related to the payment of accounts, bills, invoices, payroll, requests for reimbursement, request for other payments, transfer of funds, and amendments. Under five point one, emergency purchases, there were none. And under five point two, which will be the payment of our bills, which they're all lined up there. I didn't see anything out of the ordinary.
No, it's just a little bit hard this month due to the payment to Sid and Barton, which is a not typical type payment we make. Yeah, for one engine. Yeah, doesn't that have any comments?
I think we had an architect payment too.
Yeah, yes, sir. I'll make a motion that we approve five point two for two million three hundred forty-eight thousand six hundred and five dollars and forty-one cents.
And a motion by Commissioner Dominique to pay our bills in the amount of two million three hundred forty-eight thousand six hundred and five dollars and forty-one cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner.
Second.
Is there any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Okay. Five point three is our district credit card bills. We've got them over Friday and over the weekend. I didn't see anything out of the ordinary unless somebody else has found anything.
No, everything.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to pay our credit card bills.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner Arnold. We pay our credit card bills in the amount of twenty-five thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirteen cents. Have a second?
A second.
A second by Commissioner Wilson. Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries too. Five point four is our contract payments. Blue Cross Blue Shield and H D L and all our other contracted providers. I think they're all in line.
I'd make a motion that we approve our contract payments in the amount of two hundred ninety-nine thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents.
And a motion by Commissioner Dominique to pay our contract payments in the amount of two hundred ninety-nine thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. Have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Wilson. Any other question or discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Under five point five, there were no urgent purchases this month. And anyway, five point six is our pre-approved payments for Blue Cross Blue Shield and Verizon, which we've already taken care of that. That's just for information only. So, all right. Item six, approval of minutes. Receive, discuss, and take any action relating to the following reports. Minutes of the January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five board meeting and six point two, minutes of the February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five board meeting.
Well, I reviewed both and would, unless anybody would oppose, I'll make the motion that we approve both of them in the same motion. Approve the minutes of the January twenty-seventh board meeting as well as the February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five board meeting.
Okay. And motion by Commissioner Dominique to approve the minutes of the January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five board meeting and the minutes of the February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five board meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Item seven, executive director report.
So, as always, I will hit on a few highlights. You have the written report already. So, to start off with, the vast majority of all the kickoff meetings that were required in the new contract with the volunteer departments have successfully concluded, and it was, as I say, very positive and collaborative spirits. So that was very nice. The sales tax collections remain strong. We have now a year-to-date collection of up nine point one percent versus forecast in the budget had it at a two percent growth. So, as I have mentioned before, I think we should consider it to be a windfall rather than an ongoing feature until we get full visibility at the end of the year of it. The, I also would like to address the overtime that we have incurred so far in the year. We're almost at the full year budget already. So, finance and myself, we've had a lot of discussions about this because currently, when you see the monthly report, the older TIFMS-related expenses, be it overtime, be it regular pay, be it fuel, be it travel, all that flows through our regular operating expenses. And then the revenue gets booked separately. We are planning on checking with our auditor if we could simply restructure that so that when we actually issue an invoice to TIFMS, T-DOM, and we get that invoice approved, we can actually book a receivable in the expectation that if they have approved it, we will get reimbursed within two to three months. And at that time, rather than booking it as revenue, we book it as an offset in the expense. So if that gets approved, then what we will see in the operating reports is the true overtime and expense, not something that has been artificially increased because of TIFMS. So, we will get back to you hopefully when, by the next board meeting, whether that is practical or not.
On the same subject, do you have the ability to capture the amount of overtime that we're expending due to understaffed? So, because right now, I know that you said that we're, okay, we're offsetting some of that overtime expense by not having full staffing. So is there a way to segregate that so we really can see true unplanned overtime?
You mean backfill because of TIFMS?
No, no.
No.
Easy shifts.
Yeah, just, so, so we don't, it's our last class that just made it.
Yes.
So, we were backfilling some of those positions through overtime.
Correct. Now, we're down one position.
Right. But do we have a way to segregate that? And what I'm driving at is, do we have a way to look at true unscheduled, unplanned overtime?
We can go back through the seat assignments and decipher it, yes.
Or look at it going forward?
Yes.
Just some way to start tracking it. So, if we've identified TIFMS as a potential area that's skewing our perception of overtime, then let's take, let's segregate all of it. Let's really see truly what, how being impacted by overtime.
Yes.
What we're actually feeling, it's not built in already.
Scheduled, scheduled, predictable, not scheduled.
Yeah, they're unscheduled overtime.
Yep.
I was just wondering, Eric and I looked at this and talked with Sherri. She believes that mid-April, we should be, our payroll should fully reflect, fully staff positions. And at that time, therefore, we should see the trend for overtime going down. And then that there, we could kind of look at the delta between what it was and what it is. And hopefully, that might reveal something to us.
Mr. Dominique, to answer your question, yes, we can look at the seat assignment and go back and decipher that easily.
Okay. So, I just wanted to kind of, we talk about overtime each year.
Yes.
And we just need to start breaking it out into components so that we can really start assessing where we're spending money, that unplanned, where we're at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If it's at a breakover point, what to do next.
Right.
Yep. So, my final point was is that investment income is right now slightly ahead of the budget projections. And hopefully, it'll stay that way if federal reserves so want. And that's all I have, unless the board have any questions.
You were talking about the sales tax. And the reason we're there is because we have one big sales tax that our company found.
That, I can actually enlighten the board a little bit further on that in the closed session.
Okay.
Where we can talk about the name of the taxpayer and so forth.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any other questions for, does anything else, sir?
No, that's it.
Okay. All right. Eight will be financial reports. I guess it swings to you.
I think, Commissioner, so, with the board's permission, we could look at the February twenty-twenty-five budget to actual report for the operating count. That's Fund One Hundred. That's where most of our activity occurs. So, we're at February twenty-eighth, these reports are. So, we're five months into our fiscal year. So, we should be about forty-one percent at that moment. As Eric mentioned, or maybe he didn't mention, our property tax, we're right at ninety-two percent for the year. The remainder of the year will just be folks, stragglers coming through. I looked at last year, we had recorded ninety-three percent at this time of the budget. So, we're pretty much in line. Sales tax, of the seven million, that's forty-five percent of our current year budget. So, I looked at last year, and last year at this time, we were at forty percent of the budget for last year. As Eric mentioned, interest income, we're right at thirty-four percent for the year. Our total revenues compared, or actual revenues compared to budgeted revenues, we're right at sixty percent. Last year at this time, we were right at fifty-eight percent. So, we're in line with the previous year. Compensation, we've got about five million, approximately thirty thousand dollars out of eleven point six million dollar budget. We're right at forty-three percent of the budget. Now, our benefits are high, sixty-two percent, but they include that one million six hundred ninety-three thousand dollar contribution we made to our retirement, our retirement plan. So, if you exclude that, we're right at about forty-nine percent of total personnel cost versus total budgeted personnel cost. Last year at this time, we were right at forty percent. Looking on down the page, through administration, there's, the insurance is still, actuals are still exceeding. Though we did get a check recently for, from our V F I S, our insurance provider, for cleaning up some of our insurance, or our covered assets. But yeah, as soon as we probably add this new Pierce Pumper, it'll probably eat up any surplus we had. And then keeping on going down the page to the transfers, we had budgeted four point four million dollars in transfers. So, last week, I made all the transfers. So, at our next board meeting, you'll see four point four million budgeted and actually four point four million dollars transferred to the various capital funds. Operations, fairly straightforward. If you looked on down under fire operations, gear, and P P E, if you add what we've actually spent plus what we've encumbered, we're right at seventy-seven percent. So, that's good because we're actually ordering all the, all the equipment for the guys and hopefully won't have a whole lot of funds to roll over into the next fiscal year. Overall, for operations, if you add what's actually been spent, what's encumbered compared to the actual budget, we're right at forty percent. So, that looks right online. And then support services, overall, we are right at forty-one percent, which is right in line with actual budgeted expenditures. Overall, our budgeted expenditures are right at forty-one percent as well. So, now, there were a few deficits, I think, up and under information technology. We have overspent I T repairs, but Brent has a plan in place to remedy that, and he's going to have some savings in some other I T areas. And then also, we have some deficits in supplies, offices. But Larry and I looked at that, and we realized that we had made a mistake recording some of the transactions to the wrong object code. And so, this week, we're going to tidy all that up. So, when we get back to the next board meeting, that deficit, twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars, probably won't be there at all. Or if it is, it'll be fairly insignificant. Overall, if there's any questions I can answer, just let me know.
Can you tell the board about the letter from the auditor? Would you tell them about that? The one I had to send back?
Well, all the board members should have received.
Did they get one? Okay.
Yeah, all others should have received a letter, and it's a really kind of a, it's boilerplate language. But then, there's a questionnaire at the end that you folks need to respond to. And hopefully, you got it and you responded. I think everyone got back to me and said, I got it, responded, and they.
No. I don't think I've gotten it.
Okay. Well, I actually gave them, you know, I looked, tracked down your home address and shared it with them.
If you didn't send, if you didn't send it to my P O box, if they send it to my physical address, it will go to no man's land.
That's where it went.
It is in the Bermuda Triangle. We will track it down. And I'm having a conversation with Aaron tomorrow. Has, actually, I had emailed Aaron, our auditor, the plan for the accounts receivable for the TIFMS earlier today. I'm going to follow up with him tomorrow on the phone call, and I'll update him. Maybe after sometime during this meeting, I might track down your post office box.
Okay.
Because I just gave you your physical address.
That's fine. I'll get it for you.
All right. Is that all you've got, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Item number nine will be Director General Resources Report. I think she gave it to you this year.
Yes, so Sherri should be back towards the end of April. Everything went well with the surgery and so forth. And as you can see, there was a fairly brief report, and there are no new workforce injuries.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
There's only one injury that we have. I mean, still pending surgery. And then there's so many weeks after that, do we have a prognosis on?
I can say workers have been very unresponsive in the process. There's minor injuries.
Yeah.
And I spoke to Sherri about that, and she has spoken to the workers. And the last I heard was that they had received a request for surgery, and they, I promised they would not respond promptly.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Item ten, Community Outreach Coordinator Report. Ms. Nikki?
Good evening. So, I offered my report up a little bit differently this time, kind of giving a description of some of the things that take place during the month. Of course, when we write the reports up, I notice that a lot of mine are the first half of the month. So, while I detailed some of our more significant media interviews, so, a lot of that was TIFMS, whether it was with Chief Greaser, or we had some fantastic interviews that were hosted by Lieutenant Bardwell and his, you know, efforts as kind of our TIFMS coordinator and helping with those things and what we were doing out in the field. You know, I've got smoke detectors on here, and that seems like it was weeks ago because we've had so many things going on. But those were just some of the big things. And I made a note as far as how often I'm talking to the media in there, which is usually what I'm doing when I'm over here on my phone because we have a couple of fires going on right now. So, just a couple of those, those big items that we've been talking to the community about. If you've noticed the last several weeks, especially with the weather and these high winds, we have stayed, I say we, the team has really stayed busy throughout all hours with these fires that are getting out of control because of the fact that even though we're not under a burn band, people are burning, and it's just, it's a significant issue as the winds carry those fires away. So, those guys are really staying busy with that. So, those are things that we've really just kind of stayed focused on as far as trying to, in multiple languages, get the message out that it's really not a safe time to be burning outside right now. As far as being out in the community with the weather becoming prettier, we have a lot of events that are coming up with some of our local churches, especially in the school districts. So, we routinely send out information, hey, as, as things are being planned, let us know what we can be a part of. So, we were able to participate and read across America. We had a fantastic event with our Chapel Hill crew, those volunteers over at Wise Elementary as part of their career day. We have some of those things coming up in the next several months. The East Texas Fire and Nature Festival, that's going to be a huge thing that we have coming up, as well as Touch a Truck with Junior League. So, those are some things that are coming, as well as the things that we've been doing. You'll see a lot of our crews, our volunteer teams as well, out there at some of our baseball games and just any other spring sports, just to make sure that we have a presence, that we're in the area. And quite frankly, we have just such great community support at our local school districts. So, when we're at an event like that, the good news is the community is there. So, if they need someone, we're right there beside them. We have H O A meetings coming up. I do want to point out publicly, South Spring Baptist Church, they have really been just diligent about coming up to the fire stations in their district and providing supper. And so, I want to publicly acknowledge them. I've acknowledged them on social media. But just here at the board meeting, they're one of a couple of churches who are also getting ready to host a first responder family day. So, I sent that information out to all of our teams, just to let them know. So, I just want to publicly say thank you to that group because they do a great job. In addition to that, of course, we still have the website. Those meetings are still taking place, so we're working on that. Again, we have that soft deadline about September. I've worked with a lot of our department heads to make sure that there wasn't anything on our website as far as going through and looking at it, say, hey, or what do we need to keep? Is there anything that we need to remove so that we're efficient in that move over? And then, I do want to also publicly acknowledge, we have received some fantastic engagement on our social media in response to all of the things that our teams are doing all at the same time. Because right now, we have teams on TIFMS deployment, we have teams battling the fires that are going on here, we had the, all the backfilling that are going on, we had the training coming in. I know I've spent the majority of the morning with Lieutenant Moore because we were working, or they were, I wasn't working on it, but they were, they were in the pool getting ready for the Swiftwater team and getting those guys trained up for the upcoming summer months. So, it's just fantastic to see how many people are willing to step up and fill those spots and put in the extra effort. And then the families that are behind them, supporting them to do that, that has really been noticed on our social media throughout our community. People, you know, commenting online and say, hey, thank you guys for what you're doing. Thank you for, for everything that's going on. So, it's just nice to see the community appreciating that.
Certainly is. Good. Thank you for recognizing as well.
Yes, yes.
Is there a way on our website, like when the weather warning goes out, does it comes up on our website immediately?
Yes, and I think right now, some of the graphics already kind of show when there's some things going on. But certainly, one of the things that we'll have on our website will be kind of like an announcement that if there's something significant going on that we can turn on and off. So, when there are burn bands, when there's high winds, things like that, of course, we try to post it to the top of our social media. Because I didn't put the numbers in this time, just to kind of mix it up a little bit. But a lot of our engagement, we're still in the thousands with all of our videos that we're posting. Some of our posts are twenty-four thousand people reaching with some of our TIFMS deployments. So, the, we're, we're telling people what's going on. We're working with the radio stations, we're working with the local media. But there's always a way to try to reach someone on a different medium.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Item eleven, Chief of Operations Report.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. Exciting to provide you my report. I think we talked about it a little bit in the workshop, but really excited about Class Eight, the participation that we had and the success of that onlining academy or onboarding academy. A lot of, a lot of good work on, on the instruction side as well as the recipient side. So, a lot of, a lot of good things took place there. I had the opportunity on Friday, the fourteenth, to swear in eight new full-time employees and one part-timer. And get really excited about every one of them. Like, their, their willingness to serve, and they're excited to be here in Smith County. So, it's just really exciting to see that, that youth and excitement. I would start over tomorrow, like to jump right back in where they're at. It's so exciting. Also, in my Friday report, I indicated we had one promotion, Dylan Lassen promoted to lieutenant at Thirty-Six House in Chapel Hill. So, we're excited about that. Also, the driver engineer promotion's coming up on the fourth. So, that's, that's right around the corner, and we've got a significant volume of those that are interested in testing for, for driver this time. So, a lot of development that's been going on behind the scenes. So, I think we've got over twenty that are signed up to compete in that promotional process. So, really excited about that. In addition, working with the county and the CAD project, recently had a good collaborative meeting with EMS in trying to improve our shoot times, how we get the call, how we process that call, how quickly we can get the call and expedite that. So, we're, we're excited about a new status board that's going to be integrating and the potential that EMS would create the interface between CAD to CAD. So, there's, there's an appetite for that, and I'm excited. That's really exciting for me to hear that. And so, there was a good excitement in the room about that. Additionally, we just continue on the other projects, the new engines here. We're putting tools and equipment on it and getting radios installed. The Mac Dozer, I shared some, some photos in the, the Dozer Transport, rather, I shared that in my Friday report. Exciting on how that's looking and the value that is for our district and getting that second plow up on, piggyback on, on that unit. And, you know, we continue the investigation. As you know, we approved last, the last meeting on the digital recovery, trying to wrap up that investigation. And so, Chief Strickland's got it almost done, but we're waiting to see if we get any of the video evidence to support the findings. With that, I'm happy to answer any of your questions. I'll also share that TIFMS is actively deployed. You've seen lots of fire activity in the state of Texas. We've kind of been all over the place and, and literally plugged in on active fire. So, like, not setting at a hotel. They've been, they've been fighting fires. So, any questions might have, I'm happy to answer. Thank you.
All right. Eleven point two, discuss, consider, and take any necessary action on any form of, you know, alternative staff plans.
Yes, sir. Yeah, really exciting that we, you know, we had the opportunity to discuss this at length and openly and discuss that in the workshop that we did back on the twelfth. I enjoyed the participation. I enjoyed the, the exchange back and forth and really talking about the good of the citizens and the businesses and visitors of Smith County, how we can maximize our service delivery, maximizing the volunteer response that we have in place and trying to fortify that and improve it. I'm talking about water supply and water delivery, the tactical tenders concept, the two-man, that, that allows us to flex just a little bit, and then the, the three-man engine company. engine company concept moving forward. So I, it's my opinion that, that this concept really does a, a lot for our district and most, most importantly, the, the, those that, that support us here in Smith County, the district that we, that we supply services to. So I'm excited about the presentation that you have in front of you, the, the exchange that we had. I feel like it maximizes at every turn and for, not only for our citizens, but for firefighter, firefighter safety, how we attack fires, how we, how we respond, our capacity to, to fight fires here in Smith County. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I'll, I'll thank, I'll thank you and the rest of the staff for putting together. It was a great job. Helps us, helps me personally see a little bit clearer where the needs are and how we can affect that through the, through the staffing changes being proposed. So thanks for the hard work. Great, great information. And especially to sit down and how do you, you know, not only just how do we do it with people, but how do we do it within our budget? So thanks very much.
Yeah, thank you for those kind words. You know, when I came here two, two years ago, I, I had to learn the county quickly. I think I've learned a lot. I've got a lot to go, but I've, I've learned quite a bit. And I think this plan is, is exactly what we as a district need at this moment.
There's a lot of hard work. I know you all worked a lot, a lot of hours on it.
I think we collaborated.
You brought everything forward and you showed us how you were going to do it. That was the big thing, just knowing how you were going to do it.
A lot of collaboration, you know, with career staff, with volunteer staff, volunteer chiefs. I mean, we've collaborated at length on, on this project.
I have one clarification that I probably didn't get in the workshop, but sorry to catch you off guard with this question, but
Please.
On the financial, on the financial impact, does that include all the promotions accounted into that, that financial impact for the year?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that, we, we went back in and modified the, the staffing, basically canceled the twelves, put everything in place and rebuilt it, which allowed us to use the workforce plan and, and plan the, the forecast all the way through the budget cycle. So what, what you see in front of you is, is one half of that, which is from April to October.
Thank you. No further questions for me.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion that we would approve the ultimate staffing plan and associated budget amendments effective date of April the first, twenty twenty-five, as presented.
And the motion by Commissioner Dombe, approve the alternative staffing plan and associated budget amendments with an effective date of April first, twenty twenty-five, as presented by the staff. Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same name? Eleven point three, discuss, consider and take any necessary action on the setting of strategic priorities that the terminal district needs.
Commissioners, I'm happy to, to talk about that as well. As, as you know, that was in conjunction with our workshop and we talked openly and discussed and collaborated back and forth. We answered a lot of questions related to that. There were other questions that kind of evolved from that. Happy to discuss more. What you have in front of you is, is the, the staff recommendation and happy to discuss or adjust as you see fit.
I know we had a lot of discussion about it and, and I think that we kind of left off at the end, talking about different scenarios for the priorities that we would have. And I'll just put my comment out there, that I look at it and think that in, in light of what we're doing with the additional staffing in different locations, I would actually move the Jamestown station, move remodel up one place and put the Winona, and, and I'm still in between Winona and Dixie Station, which one will hold priority.
Right.
I think that we should actually sit down and look at it a little bit further and make sure that we're based on the timing to actually implement, how long it would actually take and which one's going to bring the most benefit to us, as far as moving staff back into the heat map area. Because if, in my opinion, if we have a Jamestown station on a relatively short time period, and we'd have to look at our staffing alternatives for there, that that would like, actually allow Dixie, if they had a station to move to, move back down quicker. And so that's the reason for my, my looking at the difference in between a Winona versus a Dixie priority, two, three.
Sure.
But that, that's my comment.
Yeah, I think there's some other analytics that, that we can present to you related to response times and things of that nature, especially with those two districts. We really drill down and analyze those further.
My, my, my thing that's kind of near me is, is which is the one between Dixie and Winona that we need to do first?
Yeah. And I, yeah, I personally don't know that we have, I would have enough information in front of me tonight to make that decision.
Okay.
But I think that, you know, one and four is easy. Two, three is the, the one we, I think we'll just need a little bit more information.
Yeah, I like you. I think we need to move Jamestown up into two and put, put three and four, Dixie to Winona.
Yeah.
No, I, I agree. We don't have to make the decision on Winona or Dixie right at this moment. Main thing is get Jamestown started and then come back and we can revisit whether we're going to go to Winona or Dixie at a later date.
Commissioners, one?
Commissioners, if, if we can at, at least get a decision, a firm decision to move forward with the move and remodel of the pier and beam structure to the Jamestown area in lieu of new construction, so that we can start getting RFPs out for those smaller jobs like septic and all of that.
That'd be my recommendation is to make, move the, the building up and do the remodel on it. Go ahead and get started there. It's the quickest way to make that happen.
Get, get them something and get them started. And then they, they later they can come back and build it better.
If, if I also may, if that is what the board decides, if the board could then also acknowledge that we finalized the staffing plan for Jamestown, once the new facility is completed after that.
Yeah.
We don't need to take that decision today.
Yeah, I'm not advocating that we take that decision right now.
Right.
This is just to get the station started.
Yeah. Get started up there. Yeah.
I entertain a motion to that effect.
Do the area state that?
A motion by Commissioner Wilson that we use the existing, existing house to be moved and remodeled and get a, get the bays built.
Okay.
Take out your RFPs and RFQs or whatever you need and get it rolling. Second?
Yeah.
Second by Commissioner Donald. Any other question or discussion?
Larry, have you already picked the kind of site where you don't set that building up there? I know the property.
The architect's working on it, but, but yes, we know a general location.
Okay.
Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Any opposed, same name? That motion carries. Okay. Eleven point four, discuss, consider and take any action on officer leadership development class that a cost not to exceed fifteen thousand four hundred.
Commissioners, what you have before you is a culmination of, of several months of work trying to produce a development plan and a development class for our officers. This is largely structured around leadership. It's, it's also structured around some, some current things in the fire service and trends that need to be addressed, some culture kind of things I presented, had Chief Strickland put the, the curriculum before you. So hopefully you've had time to review that. I find it to be a pretty aggressive day. It's replicated two days in a row, so the same class, not, not two expanded days, but same class replicated day two. In an effort to minimize the, the operational impact and overtime that would be required of that. But it is a large commitment, yet I think the return on the investment is high. I've reached out to our volunteer chiefs and extended a, an offering there. And so I, I, I think that our return on investment is quite high for this, for this amount of money.
I know we discussed it the other day, with our TCFD volunteer, and it's kind of short notice, but, you know, so I think, I think that'd be a good idea for everybody to go to. So I think, I think it's a good, a good way to build your leadership.
Yeah, I think the target audience is, is that chief, assistant chief kind of conversation in, in our VFD world.
So what are you, what are you planning on doing this time?
It's, it's in April, the latter part of April.
Okay. So, I know that we have a training budget.
Right.
So, and, and I think that we had identified several things within that, within the year that we were going to target. Does this fit within those or?
It does. And so what you're also seeing there is, is some transfer that occurs in the, in the funding request, some transfer that, that offsets the overtime, that tries to offset that in there.
I know to that part, I didn't, didn't know if it was.
Yes. Yes, it works.
Good. Thank you.
All right, I want to make a motion on item eleven point four. I'll make a motion. A motion by Commissioner Arnold that we approved fifteen thousand four hundred for the leadership development class.
Second?
Good to take it back to Mr. Donald. Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, same name? And that motion carries. All right. Eleven point five, discuss and take any necessary action on purchase of battalion chief vehicle replacements. I know the chief has worked on this real hard to bring it back in the budget, so.
Yeah, I've, I've, I've written you an explanation of how we went about that. Hopefully you had the time to, to review that. But that, I think, I think the, the objectives there are all met. We, we don't, we didn't degrade the performance of the, of the truck, went with a, a little less expensive topper and some recycling of, of some equipment. But I think the return on the investment and bang for, bang for our buck is, is, is exceedingly high. And we should get a, a good, a good product here that'll serve, serve our district and our battalions quite well.
I got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Not as far as whether needed or not, but actually about the process we went through and getting the quotes and everything.
Yep.
Was there anything that sporting, you know, single, on a, on a single manufacturer rather than going to the different, three different manufacturers to bigger pricing?
The cha, the chassis, we did. Okay, so on the, on the chassis side of the equation, on, on the upfitted side of the equation, we, we did not. We, we went with HGAC pricing and went with, with Sid and Smart and related to that. And the, and the, the performance that we've had from them and the product that they've provided us. And so not every upfitter does that quite a quality of work. And so we have some pretty good examples of it. I think the Tahos are, are good evidence of, of how they go about their wiring and their systems management on, on the trucks is quite high.
So you, you, you singled out and went, went with Dodge over the other, so what?
We did, we did price out the Chevrolets and the Fords to go with that. We sure did.
We'll have two quotes showing. And, and I think our practice is three, right?
Right.
So.
And so we had the competitive quotes, but then it also fits under the buy board pricing. So it's, it's in that pricing across the board. And you might have, I don't think that you were going to beat that in terms of a competitive price elsewhere. Like we, we shopped it to the local and ended up in Grapevine with, with that price, which was better.
Okay. So another thing that I was a little bit concerned about is that, under one quote states quantity of three, and we know we're buying two.
Oh, no, no doubt.
So does it make a difference in the price reported? And then the other one states quantity of one. So does it, the other quote we have, so is it, how'd you, how'd you reconcile the, the difference and make sure that we're getting apples to apples comparison?
Right. Are you, are you indicating in the, in the Sid and Smart and bid quote?
No.
No.
Talking about factual from the manager, from the, for the chassis.
Uh, from, from Grapevine Dodge is, is the one that?
Peters.
Okay. So I think that we, we asked them initially for three.
Right.
And then we had them confirm those quotes and they were still good for, for two. So.
Same way with the?
The Grapevine Dodge? Peters, yes.
Peters quoted two?
They did.
Okay. They didn't give you a discount for two?
No. No, I think we're, we're, we're at.
It's more about procedurally how we're going about it.
I follow you.
And we've, we, we've made a lot of effort trying to make sure that we set aside procedures from what we're going to do. And it doesn't appear that we did it.
Okay.
So I think that, I mean, as far as.
You'd like to see the.
To me, it doesn't, doesn't appear that.
You'd like to see the assessment done consistently.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I'd like to know that we're, that pricing is based on a true apples to apples comparison.
Okay.
And, and the only way that I feel like you get that is the, the quotes reflect what we're really supplying.
Right.
And, and not left up to assumptions.
Okay, fair enough.
No, that's my, just going to look at some of the detail. There's my comment.
Okay.
It's more or less kind of the data.
It's just, let's follow the process.
Yeah.
And if, if we're not going to, if we can't, then, then that's fine. I'm saying we can't always, but let's just acknowledge that we haven't and why we, why we're unable to. Without that acknowledgement in there, it appears that we just sit at the side. I'm not saying you did. I'm saying that the appearance from what I see leads me to believe that. So I'm just, so to keep that perception correct and let's just, just a little bit more detail and pay a little, a little bit more attention to some of the details, I think.
Fair enough.
And I don't have a problem.
Would you run the table and wait till this layer or?
No. No, I think that, that we've gone through this process previously a couple of times.
We have.
I want to make a motion on eleven point five.
I'll make the motion to approve the project's total cost not to exceed two hundred and thirty thousand nine forty-two and zero dollars and allow the staff to sign all related documents.
A motion by Commissioner Arnold. Second?
Second.
The second by Commissioner Wilson to approve the project at a total cost not to exceed two hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars and allow staff to sign all related documents. Is any other question or discussion? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same name? And that motion carries. Good thing about it, the other trucks were fixing to get in the costless money.
Repairs.
Yeah. All right, twelve, assistant directors report on support. Sir, flare.
Good evening, commissioners. Today I'd like to get started by introducing two of our newer employees. First up is Jason. Jason, if you'd stand up. Hello to everybody. Jason's our, our new fleet PM tech. He's been with us a few months now and just due to some scheduling conflicts, we haven't been able to get him in. But I thought it's important for him to see a meeting and for all of y'all to be able to see him. So.
Welcome.
Welcome. Glad to have you.
And then next to him is CJ. CJ just started. This is, I think, about your second week or first few days? Yes. So CJ's our other fleet mechanic, new to the team. So we're, we're back up to full staff. So it's nice to have you both.
Welcome.
Glad you're here.
On that, Jason just got back from the EBT conference. So he's well on his way to getting his EBT one and adding another EBT to the team. So it's good to have. Aside from that, I'm, I'm happy to announce that all of our, all of our new fuel tanks are in. They are on sites, all installed, and our facilities team is going around hooking up all the electrical connections. I believe those will all be done today, or have been done today. And so we'll be ready for fuel just as soon as we get the new contract approved, hopefully a little later in the meeting. Other than that, my board report's in front of you and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So now you two guys are here, your SLA's going to improve?
That's, that's the goal. Already seeing an increased rate of, of resolution closure rates. And next meeting, we'll be announcing some improvements that we're making to the PM processes and flows that should drive lower, uh, lower downtime events on our pumps. So you'll see that coming through as well.
Good work, Larry. Appreciate it.
Any new facilities guys are doing a great job as well, staying up, keeping up with everything, right?
Yes, sir. And we, we've been using them in lots of different ways. One, I think we're going to see significant savings this year in our, in our PM cost, because we're able to bring that PM cost in-house. We've had several examples of a single ticket that would have been outsourced, saving four or five hundred dollars per instance of those occurring. So later on in the year, probably another three or four months, I'll be bringing to y'all kind of what our, what our realized savings have been and what we expect them to continue to be. And we've been able to use them in lots of unique ways. We've used the groundkeepers to pre-treat during icing events. They, they help build pads for the new fuel tanks, put in some French drains where we're having drainage issues. They've painted interior buildings and, and rooms whenever we've had rainout events. So they're staying very busy and it's been a force multiplier for us.
Great.
And it, I'll take just a minute. Commissioner Drew, he came in. I'll make sure to recognize her. So I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Glad you're here. All right, item twelve point two, discuss, consider taking any necessary action on the insurance claim on troop engine one forty-six.
Commissioners, this has been a, a group effort. Operations team has been instrumental as well as, as Keith and Carl has really been leading the way from Fleet, trying to get this insurance claim resolved. They have V F S, our insurance carrier, has agreed to total the vehicle and settle up at the agreed upon value, which is that three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. The claim information that you have in front of you is only for the engine and there'll be additional settlements on equipment and gear, some that have already occurred and some that are ongoing. And so what's in front of you is the wording that they require in order for us to proceed, which is authorizing the board president to designate a staff member to go ahead and execute all the documents and then for y'all to officially set the settlement value.
Only question I had on it is, how do we know if three ninety's the value?
So, three ninety is our agreed upon value with the insurance company, pre-negotiated on the insurance policy itself. So, three ninety is our cap.
It's stated in the policy.
So, so, yes, that's what we're paying the policy premium based on, that three ninety agreed upon value. So they are precisely where they need to be.
So, if we, if we want, if we want more, we need to negotiate a higher value at the time.
That way you see the policy, yes, sir.
Thank you.
I want to take a motion on that, oh, twelve point two.
I make the motion that we accept the offer of three hundred and ninety thousand and authorize the board president to find authorization to appoint a staff member for signing any documents.
I want to take a motion by Commissioner Dom, now the second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Okay, Larry, if you can sign.
Thanks, I'll actually have a document that I'll need you to sign later.
Yeah, that's fine. All right, discuss and consider take action on the purchase of replacement dating room furniture for Flint Station that costs not to exceed two thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eight cents.
Commissioners, this is to replace an aging table that's pretty small at this point with a four by eight style conference table for their kitchen along with six rolling chairs. This is a line item budgeted project and is within budget. You have the evaluation tabulations for both purchases in front of you as well as some alternatives listed.
Is it within budget?
Yes, sir.
I want to take a motion on twelve point three.
Somebody?
Motion by Commissioner Dom, now the second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Twelve point four, discuss, consider and take action on restocking wildland firefighting P P E at a cost not to of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-six cents.
Commissioners, we have a wonderful problem. We've had lots of people get certified, especially when it comes to wildland certifications. And it, it's draining on our budget, it's going to be over budget probably in the P P E line item overall. I think we may have some savings elsewhere in the budgets, we may be, be able to transfer some money around. But it is a wonderful problem to have as we've got lots of improvements on our certification requirements. And due to the provisioning policy, we have to make this purchase. We're sticking with companies that we've used with in the past without any pricing changes, so those evaluation tabulations hold true.
And this may be because a lot of volunteers and their career staff forgot to wildland certifications at one time.
That is correct, yes, sir.
Make the motion, we authorize requested purchase from Benz Truck Repair at a cost not to exceed twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-six cents for firefighting P P E.
I want to motion by Commissioner Dom to authorize requested purchase from Benz Truck Repair at a cost not to exceed twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-six cents for wildland P P E. Second by Commissioner Wilson, any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Twelve point five, discuss, consider and take any action on purchasing new front and rear tires for a wildland brush one twenty-six at a cost of two thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents.
Commissioners, we're in this weird year where we have lots of tires to do. Unfortunately, we're going to have some more, the next several items and then I think a couple, we skip one and then a couple more on here. It's just, this is that seven-year timeframe for us and so we're going to have lots of tires to purchase. We're going to try to keep these tires on hand and put them in the next auction, so it's going to be a little different for us to see if we can recoup any of these, any of the costs from the tires, we'll see how that goes. I can't make you any promises, I don't know what the tires are going to go for, but we're going to try. Other than that, they're all going to be pretty standard.
I want to take a motion on item twelve point five on the tires for wildland brush one twenty-six.
Somebody?
I want to motion by Commissioner Arnold, now the second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dom. Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Twelve point six, discuss and consider and take any action on purchasing new front and rear tires for Bullard Transport one fifty-seven at a cost of three thousand eighty-seven dollars and ten cents.
I make the motion, we authorize the purchase of ten replacement tires for Bullard Transport one fifty-seven, contracted vendor Southern Tire Mart at a cost of three thousand eighty-seven dollars and ten cents.
I want to motion by Commissioner Dom, now the second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson, any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Discuss, consider and take action on purchasing new front and rear tires for a wildland tender one twenty-eight at a cost of three thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-six cents from Southern Tire Mart.
Make the motion, we authorize purchase of six replacement tires for a wildland tender one twenty-eight from Southern Tire Mart at a cost of three thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-six cents.
I want to motion by Commissioner Dom, now the second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. Any other question or discussion? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. All right, twelve point eight, discuss, consider and take any action on the purchase of flammable safety cabinets at a cost of twenty-six thousand six sixty-six fifty-one.
Commissioners, this is a line item and project, project identified capital project from the equipment fund. Total project budget was thirty-four thousand nine eighteen, we're coming in under budget, this is the complete project. We'll have a project savings of around eight thousand dollars. And there's three different, or four different sizes of cabinets going into various facilities. All of this aims to promote additional safety and hopefully better insurance premiums in the long run.
I'll make the motion, we authorize the purchase of a flammable safety cabinet that a cost of twenty-six thousand six sixty-six fifty-one for B L A N.
I want to motion by Commissioner Wilson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dom. Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Twelve point nine, discuss, consider and take action on purchasing new front and rear tires for Jackson Heights Brush one thirty-one at a cost of two thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy cents.
Make the motion that we authorize the purchase of six replacement tires for Jackson Heights Brush one thirty-one from Southern Tire Mart at a cost of two thousand five twenty-seven and seventy cents.
Okay, I want to motion by Commissioner Arnold, now the second.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Twelve point ten, discuss, consider and take any action on repair of roof at Fleet Maintenance Shop at a cost of forty-five thousand six ninety-two thirty-one.
Commissioners, I'll start off and just say this is not a budgeted, or line item budgeted price, but will be within budget. We've identified project savings in other areas. It's capital budget we feel would be appropriate to take these funds from. I have a video of it raining in the shop, we have, we have water coming down, electrical fixtures and, and causing tripping hazards and it, it just has to get done. We, we made some attempts earlier on to, to try to prolong this and it's just not working. So, it, it's time to go ahead and we've looked at this several different ways. We've looked at it replacing the metal, we've looked at it just doing some touch-ups and, and putting on new bolts and then we looked at this, basically a poly coating. And the evaluation tabulation is in front of you and we believe the best value to the district is the poly coating. And the vendor that we have selected is the low bid and the, the best warranty.
Yeah, fifteen-year warranty?
Yes, sir.
Versus twenty-year old metal?
Yes, sir.
At half the price?
Yes, sir.
But does it, does it increase your cost whenever you get time to replace the, the metal?
They said you can just do another coating, so the, and a lot of times you can just do a, a, there's even a less, a thinner coating that they can do. So, yeah, you'll end up having a, a higher cost at some point, but we're talking thirty years from now.
Lawmaker motion would allow the staff to contract priority roofing to apply the monolithic silicon coating to the roof of Fleet Maintenance Shop at a cost of forty-five thousand six hundred and ninety-two thirty-one, issue checks to be held distributed in two draws per the funding request.
I want to motion by Commissioner Wilson, now the second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. Any other question or discussion?
Just one comment and looking at the, the, so the, make sure you encode it to the right place. If it implied that you were going to code it, you were going to code it to a different account in lieu of transferring money? That's my comment, let's make sure we get it coded in the right place and then we'll, we'll reconcile budget outside of this. Sorry for interjection, but.
Yeah, I did have one question on that, are we double dipping on the, the eighty-three thousand for the repairs and erosion mitigation? We're taking credit for that, I think.
Yes, that's correct, so we have been very careful with that and anytime we make any changes on projects like that, we do put in an immediate encumbrance and so that's been factored in. So, we're not double dipping, this is the, the last little bit of savings that we have on that erosion mitigation project.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Twelve point eleven, discuss, consider and take necessary action on the purchase of additional access controllers for I T stock at a cost of two thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-five cents.
Commissioners, we're just attempting to restock our supplies, we, we try to have an inventory of these on hand just in case we have a lightning strike to a building or anything like that, we're able to get everything back up and we're working. So it's important to have these on hand.
How many is that there?
That's five.
Five.
Yes, sir.
Somebody?
Motion by Commissioner Dom, now the second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, any other question or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Discuss, consider and take action to select a fuel vendor and enter to a contract with selected vendor.
Yes, sir, y'all are all well aware that we've been looking for a fuel vendor. We went through an R F P process last month, it's actually gone about forty-five days. The executive summary and the evaluation tabulation are completed and before you as well as a copy of the R F P that was posted. That R F P did go through legal, preposting. And we asked that you go ahead and, and select Mansfield, Mansfield Energy with the, the best bid, lowest price as well.
I want to take a motion on twelve point, twelve.
I'll make the motion, select Mansfield Energy as the district's fuel provider and accept the R F P as a binding contract between the district and Mansfield Energy.
I want to motion by Commissioner Arnold, now the second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dom. Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Twelve point three, discuss, consider and take any action on improvement, maintenance, furnishing and equipment of Red Springs Station twenty-one at a cost not to exceed fifty-five thousand dollars.
Commissioners and, I'm sorry? In, in preparation for alternative staffing model that was presented and in conversations that we had during the workshop, there was going to be some cost involved with making these facilities, bringing them up to standard. Red Springs Station twenty-one has been largely underutilized the last probably eight years and has several issues that need to be repaired and fixed. What we have before you is a comprehensive plan to, to outfit the station with all its logistical needs as well as make the necessary facility repairs and improvements such as renting dumpsters, drywall repairs, replacement of drop ceiling tiles, installation of smoke alarms, purchasing appliances, purchasing beds as well as some I T costs to introduce building-wide audio and speaker system and purchase of additional computer and access control and cellphone signal booster. This is not a line item identified station improvement, but we would ask that we go ahead and take this from the capital improvement budget and capitalize this project.
What, what appliances you got to replace?
We plan to, we've got a, we've got to purchase a washer and dryer, there's not one there currently. We're going to auction the commercial refrigerator that's there, replace it with three separate refrigerators so that they have an A B and C shift refrigerator. And I think that's it from the appliance side, sir.
Well, I'll make the motion, we authorize staff to make necessary purchases to complete the required facility improvements of Red Springs Station twenty-one and furnish and equip the facility for staffing at a cost not to exceed fifty-five thousand.
I want to motion by Commissioner Wilson, now the second.
Second.
The second by Commissioner Arnold. Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Twelve point one four, discuss, consider and take action on the improvement, maintenance, furnishings and equipping of Bullard Station fifty-seven at a cost not to exceed nineteen thousand three hundred and eight dollars and eighty-three cents.
Commissioners, this is along the same lines, a little different. You know, we, we need to go ahead and start staffing Bullard Station fifty-six, but that doesn't leave enough bedrooms. We have a, a fairly active volunteer fire department there that is rostering and, and needs a place to sleep. So the thought at this point is to go ahead and, and improve the facility at Station fifty-seven so that at least in the interim while we look towards a more long-term plan to make improvements to Station fifty-six that everybody has a place to go, that they can be proud of and be comfortable in. And similar to Red Springs, we did a, we did an analysis on what that would take. And in front of you is a project budget of nineteen three oh eight. That's going to include purchasing some new fixtures and furniture as well as making some smaller maintenance repairs to that facility.
And all of this was run by current chief of Bullard and everything?
Yes.
You all agree with that?
We're going to be able to utilize it to the same extent we've been utilizing?
We'd like to, I mean, the thought is that if we're gonna, if the Station fifty-six is going to be staffed, that hopefully we can staff Station fifty-seven.
And Station two.
Provide a quicker response to the systems and that part of it.
So Commissioners, just to, just to be full, fully transparent, we're still working on some plans for some improvements that are required at Chapel Hill. Those plans are going to take a little longer to get to you. I expect some facility, maybe the addition of a wall and some appliances at that location as well as needing some, some lockers at that facility. And then we'll probably just have to purchase one or two pieces of appliances for troop station, just in full transparency to the board. Those weren't completed in time, there's, there's a lot of moving parts on those, so that's why they're not on this agenda.
I want to take a motion on twelve point one four, if somebody has a question?
I'll make the motion, which gives authorization to staff to make necessary purchases to complete the required facility improvements to Bullard Station fifty-seven and furnish and equip the facility at a cost not to exceed nineteen thousand three hundred and eight dollars and eighty-three cents.
I want to motion by Commissioner Wilson, now the second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dom. Any other question or discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. That motion carries. Item thirteen, discuss considering taking action on fire chiefs presenting and discussing issues with the board for future action. Mark.
Good evening, commissioners. Where our call numbers went up compared to January, uh, starting to get some of the spring, uh, weather, of course, the wind's up, a lot of grass fires. Uh, my assistant chief went to the safety conference in February. Um, one of my members is teaching an EMT class for Russ County, County currently. Uh, we have one new member that was just approved last week. Should be going to the office this week to get his ID card and badge and all that made. Other than that, I'm here for any questions?
I'm here.
All right.
More?
Good afternoon. First, I wanna say thank you for, uh, deciding to invest in the Station Fifty-Six out there. I think, uh, we've talked about it for a long time, that if the staffing model had changed that, that would be a good, uh, decision to try to staff that section of our district as much as possible. It would reduce call-out times to Emerald Bay and Shell Shores and Cumberland Ridge in a, in a very, very good way. So, um, thank you for that, appreciate that. Not a whole lot to report in terms of, uh, changes from last month. Um, we do still have two in paramedic school, several in fire academy, one doing his live burns this week. We're gonna try to get out there, um, to support him. Another just finished their national registry for EMT. And then we had, um, our assistant chief go to the Teak Spring School to attend live fire instructor training. Um, it's taken a little bit of time to get our four new members spun up. Um, they did attend the EVDT training out in Wynona, um, and then also working through the other minor certifications they need to be able to start responding to calls. And then lastly, I just wanna say that we're trying to pursue, um, with, when we had gone down to safety, we attended the TCFP, uh, kind of breakout workshop and, um, want to try to pursue, uh, making Bullard a volunteered VFD under TCFP compliance, cause we have a lot of TCFP certi- certified firefighters that are, we're just carrying our own commission. And so, looking for a way to make, uh, Bullard VFD, um, TCFPs com- under their compliance and auditing and their standards so that, um, we're sort of a commission department. Anyway, other than that, any other questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Chapel Hill, Chief, please.
Oh, you see, we've been running quite a few calls in Chapel Hill. Uh, packing them pretty good, cause I got, uh, told my members, actually still being active, so we made, on all the calls, they need to stay themselves active, so we did the most on that. Also, uh, we did help out at, uh, Chapel Hill, like, uh, she mentioned with our wise elementary for the kids up there, we helped them with a, kinda like a safety, we showed them their trucks and everything else at the school, so they got interested looking at what we had up there. And we did hand out, we had all the hats, I used all the hats too. They all wanted a hat. Also, I did, we had two guys go to safety as well, myself and one of my other board members with safety in February, and that was good things we got out of that as well. Uh, had three members took the, uh, vehicle certification class in Russ County, and they all passed that, and we'll be sending out the certification for them on that. Uh, and then in February, our training, we had, uh, electrical wire safety and our SCBA bottle is changed, we did that in-house. And then also, I have, uh, one guy is halfway now through his paramedic class, which sometime he's thinking about it now, but he's doing it anyways, so he's halfway through it. Uh, then I got two that completed support, so I got two of them completed that for new members on that, and also one of them completed his wildland certification as well. Uh, and then I also had a new member now, just got a paperwork, I'll be sending the paperwork in over to office for my new member coming in. And then also, I got my lieutenant, is also on the Texas Task Force Number Two, he's now going, getting his training to be on with that as well. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Collaboration, anybody here for a plan? Okay. And, Nunez, anybody here for Nunez? White House, Chief, please.
Good evening. Get to my notes here. So, this past month, we had, um... I'll bear with me. Uh, four personnel that completed their support certification, one completed wildland, one completed firefighter two, one completed driver operator, one completed fire instructor two, and then we had seven miscellaneous certification that were completed. I have one, uh, member that is currently in the TJC Fire Academy, they'll be graduating at the end of April. I have two personnel currently applying for the next TJC Fire Academy. That's that as far as certifications and current planning. Um, I wanted to thank Paula Hyatt for taking the reins on an EVDT class for the county, for the volunteers. Um, right now, as far as the support certification goes, that's one of the courses we're having the most difficulty obtaining. Um, we do have people in the county that can teach that, it's just kind of a cumbersome course to get. Um, it's not really worth setting up for one or two students, so we kinda wait for a pool of students to get together. And what happens sometimes in the meantime, there's a course that pops up somewhere and some of the students we had on the waiting list that we were anticipating taking our class, go take one somewhere else, and so we're back kind of in that cycle, but Paula was able to put a class together. How many students do we have? Twelve, thirteen?
I think it was twelve.
Twelve personnel from within the district that completed that. This was kind of a pilot program that she, uh, does with some of her online training, that she's done several classes, went very well, went and did her, uh, skills day up at, uh, Red Springs Two recently, went very well. So, just wanted to publicly thank her for that. I did have, uh, two personnel from White House that also attended the Red River Army Depot, um, Wildland Fire Academy. Uh, they both came back with some good knowledge and, and really excited about that. And that's all I've got, unless y'all have any questions for me? Thank you.
One on that.
I broke it.
One on that.
Give us the boost.
Hello. Okay, we've had one firefighter on training that received firefighter two. Three received his EVT support and has completed. One member's, um, attended a spring school. Uh, we did it in Stillwater Rotary Resort, their car show they had this past weekend. We've had three new members complete the background and drug test, they're just waiting on appointments with IT. Don't have any, uh, we did a, get a grant, wellness grant, where you purchased workout equipment, it's in operation at Station One. Have any other questions or...
I'd love for you to go back and take a look at, uh, your active list from the previous period. Uh, it shows two, just make sure that's accurate, cause y'all been running a few, few hires in that, so it's kinda odd that all of a sudden you go from like seven active to two.
Okay.
Double check on that.
I will, thank you.
Thanks.
At this time, the board will convene in a closed session, the board will... According to the Texas Act of Meetings, Act of Government Code five-five-one-zero-seven-one, five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two, and five-five-one-zero-seven-four. No action shall be taken while the board is in closed session. Any final action, final decision, or final vote shall be taken as the board reconvenes in open session, and we are adjourned at seven-eighteen, and everybody please clear the room.
We'll make the motion that we would approve the purchase of Dixie Station Number Two and authorize our Board President to sign the required documentation.
And a motion by Commissioner Domney.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Arnold to buy the Dixie Station Two and have the Board President sign all related documentation. Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any others saying nay? And that motion carries. Item sixteen, remarks by presiding officer and/or board members, information updates, items to be placed on future agendas and future meeting dates, times, and/or locations. Grant, you have anything?
No, sir, thank you.
Charles?
No.
Okay, okay. I don't have anything either.
What about Scotty?
Scotty, you have anything?
No.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry. All right, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So we are adjourned at eight, eighteen.